Welcome to the September 11, 2014 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by the members of Boy Scout Troop Number 261 with Scout Master Chris Norwood. We have Scout Kenneth Sanchez that will do the prayer, and Scout Cody Smith will do the pledge. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and allowing the leaders of Longview to meet here today and help better this great city. And Lord, just help us remember what happened on this day in 2001 with the Twin Towers, and in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, thank you. How's Boy Scout salute is it? All right, there we go. Good job, guys. Okay, citizen comment, Mr. Vic Verma.
Mayor Dean, members of council, I wasn't actually planning to speak tonight, but sometimes conversations in the hallway.
Okay, we appreciate being here.
I think you would like to hear what I have to say tonight, so. Conversations in the hallway, and we, you know, I just got an event set up today. I'm the Chair of the Signs Initiative, which is Safe and Inviting Green Neighborhoods. It is basically what's called an eco-district, and the district that we've chosen in Longview as our, that we're focused on is basically South Longview, south of Highway 80 surrounded by the Loop. And it is a joint partnership of NAACP Longview, Organizing for Action East Texas, and working effectively for Clean Air Now. We work on a lot of environmental initiatives, including climate change, emission standards, environmental justice, et cetera. We work, we have a very local focus, and so we work on issues like conservation, and so we're going to have a speaker. We have, let me make sure I got this right. So we have an event on September 25 at Jerusalem Baptist Church on Cotton Street at 6 o'clock. We will have dinner at the event, so if you come, you will get a meal. And we have a couple of featured presentations. We have Rob Holloway, who is the owner of New Orleans Gardens here in Longview, and he's going to be talking about landscape architecture, landscaping and conservation, and also how he uses solar for his efforts. And one other thing we're going to have that I think will be of interest to all of you is we will have David Simmons, your recycling coordinator. What's that?
I said from recycling.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we have David Simmons.
That's what I told you.
That was last week. We have David Simmons, the recycling coordinator for the city of Longview, who will be there to give a demonstration. I know you all are focused on getting your recycling plan and your pickups, and I've seen all the signs in Longview. So this is a great opportunity for the community members to come and see how it works. And one of the nice things about having a meal is when you have the plates, et cetera, at the end of the meal, David will show you exactly where you put all of that. So we encourage everyone to come on September 25. We have a lot of great activities with the initiative. We're looking forward to doing more here in Longview, and you can learn more about recycling and other things.
You know, I wondered if, see Ms. Kim over there with the efforts we have gone with, Keep Longview Beautiful and whatnot, if that might not be a program to kind of interface with. Okay, maybe y'all can talk after the meeting, kind of figure out how to do that. That'd be a good place for some of that initiative to be focused as well, which I know they already are, but, you know, where we could kind of join efforts to better improve that area.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. And one last thing, I did want to thank the members of council who came for our immigration forum last week. We really appreciate it. It means a lot to us to have folks in the community.
It was a good program.
Excellent.
Good program.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Vic, thank you. Consent agenda, is there any item the council would like to pull for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion? Have a motion in a second or if ever say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Budget item, consider ordinance adopting a 2014 tax rate in Leveing said right. Angela Cohen.
Good evening. The tax code specifies that the tax rate must be adopted by a recorded vote, and that a motion must be made by the governing body.
Okay, anybody have any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
No motion.
Have a motion?
I'm supposed to say something specifically.
Sorry.
Okay.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 50.99 cents per $100 evaluation, which is effectively a 1.9% increase in the tax rate.
Okay, so may I have a motion on that? Have a motion in a second or if ever say aye? All opposed, motion passes.
Opposed.
You did what?
Opposed.
Okay, let's do this by show of hand. What are you opposing to?
The increase in the rate.
Okay.
Voting against the increase in the rate.
All right, you want to discuss this since you weren't at the last meeting? I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Okay.
Pardon me?
The last two.
I'm just wondering, I hadn't.
We've been very fortunate that we, the sales tax came in about $990,000 over what we originally budgeted. The Longview economy is doing very good. It seems like that, excuse me, it just seems like that taxes continue to go up. Taxes continue to go up, fees continue to go up. The increase is about 1.9% for homeowner, which amounts to about $400,000. I would like to see if we couldn't find that $400,000 in the city operating budget itself instead of increasing the tax rate on the taxpayer, that 1.9 cents, or it's about percent, 1.9%. I would like to see us hold that increase, not to do that increase this year, and just see if we could go without that increase this year. That's my personal opinion.
Ms. Allen, and let me point out, I appreciate that. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but that's why we have these budget sessions.
I know it, I understand that.
And understand that that tax rate increase is to primary, the INS rate, that the voters supported when we did the 2011.
It is.
Okay? And if you looked at what our reserve balances are.
That's right.
With what we approved during budget, it was very close to where we want to be. So I'm not exactly sure where you would pull that extra $400,000.
Well, I'm not either, but I think with city staff, with the competent staff we have in the operation we have, that this $400,000 could be found instead of increasing the rate to the taxpayer.
We've already approved the budget, but next year, I bet y'all take that up.
Fine.
Okay, so let's do that again. We've had a motion and a second or if ever say aye? By show of hands, all opposed. Okay, motion passes. All right, zoning, public hearing items, A, would be a public hearing to consider application Z14-09, Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council. The applicant is requesting a rezone from Single Family 4 to General Retail. This is located at 1010 Marbury Avenue. As you can see from the zoning map, this is just an extension of a existing zoning to the rear of the property. This is consistent with the future land use map for Marbury Avenue. Looking at the aerial, as you can see, this is an existing restaurant, and their, part of their kitchen area is actually over onto that area, so it's just correcting existing non-conforming use, and it would allow them to expand the business and do some additional businesses on this property consistent with the surrounding area. The applicant actually owns and lives in the house that's most impacted by this rezone, so there'd be no negative impact on anybody but the person requesting it. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question, Mr. Shirley. If not, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do not have a speaker card to this item. Is anyone here would like to speak to this matter? In that being so, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
No motion.
Have a motion in a second or if ever say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item B, a public hearing to consider, application Z14-10.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting a rezone from Multi-Family 2 to Office. This is located between Jewel and Garfield along High Street. As you see here, this is in an area that does have general retail in the corridor, so this is not as intense as some of the other uses. This is for a proposed Buckner Services facility. It would be their offices in a collection facility, part of a larger project that would include future multi-family adjacent to it to serve some of their service needs. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval, as well as staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yes, sir, Ms. Garrett.
Mr. Shirley, is anybody here from Buckner?
I believe. Yes, there is.
They do have their representative here.
Okay. What I want to know, Mr. Shirley, what is the mission statement for Buckner? And what type of facility is going to be housed there?
I will let them represent that.
Okay.
Okay, well, hang on just one second. I have a speaker card when we get to the public hearing, so why don't we go to, we'll get public hearing, that way I can bring their speaker.
All right, okay.
Okay? So we'll go to public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do have a speaker card for Travis Craft. I know Travis is probably here to answer questions, but would you like to come up, ma'am, on behalf of Buckner? And we'll get you to fill out a speaker card after. With Shelley.
I'm Jane Ann Croson. I'm the Director of the Family Hope Center for Buckner Children and Family Services. This facility will be one, well, our mission statement is that we make lives better for vulnerable children and families through Christ-like values, Christ-centered values. That's our mission statement for here, Buckner Children and Family Services. And the other question you had?
The other question, what's going to be housed in this particular facility? Because I've had constituents in my district asking questions about what's going to be housed in that particular area.
Okay, on the land, there'll be two struck, one's Family Hope Center, which I'm the director, and there'll be the offices for Buckner Children and Family Services, the offices and the ministry site for the Family Hope Center. But the residential facility is called a Family Place. We have these in seven other locations nationally, and we have them internationally. They're single mothers with their children that live on site. They will go to college at Kilgore College and complete an associate degree. Childcare will also be a part of that, and that's who it is. It's single moms that are going to college.
Single moms, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I wanted. Because is it a maternity-type center?
No, it's not maternity. They already have the children.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they could be pregnant, but I mean, they have children too, but they have, it's single moms and their kids.
Single mom and the kid.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
No, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Have a motion, second or if ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion passes. Item C, public hearing considered, application PD1404.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting a rezone from General Retail to Plan Development, Single Family detached. This is along the west side of East Monroe, north of Dennis Drive. This is kind of a plot plan of what he's looking at doing. They would be detached, garden-style homes, little more density, but they still have, if you look, 164 feet of depth on their yards, so they're not going to be just crammed up on the property lines. They will have a single shared driveway access consistent with access management per Looking at there, it is a general retail corridor. This is consistent with general retail, as we have that as an allowable use. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? This item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards to this item. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? If not, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
No motion.
Have a motion in a second or if ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion passes. Item D, to hear, application M14-01.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to Devine Abiliard Parlor/Pool Hall. This is in response to a local restaurant owner looking at backfilling the McCann Street Bar &amp; Grill. When they came in to visit with us, they wanted to add a pool table. Under our existing ordinance, pool halls weren't defined by the number of pool tables, and so staff's interpretation all along has been one is the same as many. So in response to that, we did contact many other communities to see how they handled it, and it was all over the place. So we felt that it was appropriate to bring this before you guys, to see if defining that one pool table in a retail zoned area, either for, as an accessory, not a primary. So if you had a small space with a single pool table and that was your primary business, that would still be considered a pool hall. But if you had a retail establishment or a restaurant of some sort, and you had a pool table in there with it, then that's not a pool hall. And so we're all recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, questions? Mr. Manley first.
Mr. Shirley, I think this is an example of good common sense, and when I hear people complain about how difficult it is for people to do business with our city and how rigid we are, I think this, again, is a perfect example of saying, okay, we have an ordinance that is not fitting this particular situation. Let's listen to what they have to say. Again, it makes good common sense to consider this, and I'm just proud to say that, once again, I think you and your department are showing that they're working very hard to try to accommodate the people that want to do business in this city.
Thank you.
Just wanted to compliment you.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shirley, thanks for the presentation. Where does this come in as far as the alcoholic beverages? Would you give us a breakdown? I know there's a, isn't there a percentage that they can, in sales and alcoholic beverages and such as that?
Well, and that would fall under whether or not it was a, considered a restaurant with private club or just a straight bar. Under our ordinance, a restaurant with private club is allowed to sell mixed beverages with a specific use permit, as long as that mixed beverage sales does not exceed 49%.
Which situation will apply here?
That is, that wouldn't directly apply to this pool table. You could put a single pool table in any type of retail business, whether it's a restaurant. This would not allow a nightclub in the general retail.
Okay, I understand that, but this will be under the, this business will continue then? I guess we're trying to say this business will continue to be under the requirements that less than 49% revenue come from alcohol?
Yes, they would have to maintain 51% of their sales as food.
And that will continue? We're not changing that?
We're not changing that, correct.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay. Ms. Allen. Mr. Manley.
Do you have plans to go back on a routine basis and confirm that, correct?
Yes, we do have the ability, under the ordinance, to request that information if it's warranted.
Okay, anybody else? This item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? Are the owners here?
Mr. District.
For the restaurant?
Yes. I believe they're getting ready for a great opening.
Oh, hand opening, okay. Okay, and not being anyone to speak to this matter, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second or if ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed motion passes. Item E, consider request by Louis Fazio to abandon 30-foot wide alley right-of-way.
Mr. Shirley. Thank you, Mayor Dean. This is a request by Mr. Fazio to abandon an unimproved right-of-way. This is there between 13th Street and 14th Street, just north of East Cotton Street. This is in the area that we're looking at doing the Cotton Street renovation project, and so he has asked, hey, if we're, if I'm going to give up right-of-way in the front, let me go ahead and take this area that's unimproved in the back that nobody's doing anything with. Nobody really knew there was an alleyway there to begin with, and so we're just requesting to abandon that and put it back into use.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? If not, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
No motion.
Have a motion in a second or if ever say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. And again, with Richard said, when we started receiving the calls from the owners of the new, the old McCann's, I guess it is, and the name of the restaurant today is?
Bootleggers.
The Bootleggers. They were able to bootleg in a pool table. But it sounded pretty ridiculous that they couldn't have a pool table on their premise, but y'all worked hard to come up with some common sense, and we want to encourage developmental services to always do that. I mean, you know, ordinances are written, but you always, and it's about public safety, but you're trying to be accommodative as well when it's not putting anybody in a public safety situation. So good job. Okay, so we have items of community interest. Old friend, Mr. John Sims over there.
Oh.
He's speechless.
I don't think I'll say anything tonight.
You sure?
Give you a break.
Give me a break. He's speechless. All right, I know Gary got some stuff.
I don't have anything, Mr. Manley.
Really? No pictures?
No pictures.
Good, well, okay.
Oh, yes. I forgot my picture.
Uh-oh.
So I don't feel so bad.
Cash.
I want to thank Top Teens of America for planting flowers and the shrubbery, and Joey Russ at Broaden Recreation Center for purchasing those shrubs and allowing them to plant them. It really looks great. For those who don't know, I'm a member of Top Ladies of Distinction, and that is our youth auxiliary, and I just want to say thank you to them, and they are under the guidance of Ms. Shativa Marshall, who is also a city employee. So we're doing great things in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kristen?
I do, I have two. I would like to start thanking Jane Ann for being here, and also thanking Buckner for bringing Family Place to Longview. I can reiterate that she said this will be their eighth in the nation. It's a great facility. It's a great investment by Buckner in Longview and in our citizens, and I'm really excited about that coming here. So thank you. My second, which I have a picture for, is an announcement about a sex trafficking training for servicemen and women of all trades. It's intended to educate local service individuals to recognize signs of forced commercial sex because they'll already be in homes and businesses that they service. So this is being put on by our own police officer, Kristy Bryan, or she'll be presenting, and it's hosted by Cheyenne Electric and Tree of Life Mission. It's Wednesday, September 24 from 11:00 to 12:00 at Pizza King.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manley?
I got one, but before I do, I have to tell you, we're talking about this thing about the pool hall reminds me of that old, was it The Music Man? We got trouble right here in Riverside.
Yeah.
At Pool Hall. I had the pleasure to be at, you didn't see that movie, huh? I had the pleasure, along with Mr. Smith and Kristen Ishihara, to be at a very moving service this morning, up at the Fire Department Training Center. I'd like to suggest to all of our citizens, if you have a minute, go down there and see this. It's touching. It's a beautiful flag with actual, two actual girders from the Twin Towers, that they went up to New York, got brought back down here. There's about a half a dozen men and women in the Fire Department that were part of it. I was really touched, I think everybody in the room was too, with the words that our county judge, Bill Stoudt, had to say about, that we need to always remember the pain that we felt, and where we were that day, we can all remember that, I'm sure, but that it also galvanized us to remember that, at the end of the day, we're all Americans, and we'll disagree about things from time to time, but there are people out there that want to take away our way of life, and we need to come together when that happens, and remember that we're Americans first, and always. And I wanted to thank the chief and all the firemen and firewomen that were involved in this. It's a wonderful addition to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manley. Mr. Allen.
Well, Richard, what Richard said is exactly right. We just need to all remember that liberty and justice is something that continually we have to work at all the time. There are people out there that envy the United States. We are a very prosperous country. We're very successful, and there are other people that don't like that. And we just need to remember all the time, we have to take care of our liberty and justice. Thank you.
Okay. Ninth Annual T-Bone Walker Blues Festival. Reminds me, we have the Blues Festival down in New Orleans. I used to make that a regular. But it'll be held at Maude Cobb Convention and Activity Complex Friday, September 12 through Saturday, September 13, 2014. The festival is a two-day, two-stage celebration of the legendary bluesman Aaron T-Bone Walker and blues music. There will be Delta Blues and Electric Blues musicians, food and merchandise vendors Friday and Saturday, and a car show on Saturday. The event is family-friendly. To purchase tickets and for additional information, please visit www.tbonewalkerbluesfest.com. This is our first time to host this event, and I want to encourage our citizens to get out and support the event. There's some very, very impressive entertainment that's coming to town if you keep up even remotely with blues music. I mean, of course, I can't stay up that late, but I'd like to go see Rick Derringer, and also we got, you know, Jimmy Vaughn and the Tilt-A-Whirl Band, and Rick's going to play again. I might be able to catch him Saturday, that's at 9:30, so that ain't too late. But anyhow, great entertainment, and strongly urge everybody to go out and catch some of the activities there. Also, the 2014 State of the City Business Luncheon will be Friday, September 19, 2014, Pinecrest Country Club, beginning at 11:30 a.m. Contact the Longview Chamber of Commerce at (903) 237-4000 for more information. This will be my 10th and final State of the City address. I have no idea what Sean and some of the preparers are putting together just yet. They told me not to worry about it. I have confidence, Sean. I have confidence, but hopefully there'll be some pretty good, that'll be pretty entertaining, hopefully, and some good information there as well, so please come out. Tuesday's National Night Out Kickoff Party was a huge success with a great turnout. If you weren't able to attend the event, that's okay, because there's still plenty of time to register your neighborhood. National Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, October 7. All citizens of both Longview and Greck County encouraged to participate by hosting a National Night Out party. If you have questions or to register your party, please contact Natasha Howard at (903) 239-5503, or our friend Sergeant Jackie House at (903) 452-3522. You can also visit pip.longviewtexas.gov/nno. Dwayne Archum, I'm going to ask Dwayne to give us an update on our new sanitation program. I did it last meeting. Dwayne said he'd do it for this meeting.
I thank y'all for letting me come and speak for just a minute, speak to you and to speak to our customers. We've had some bumpy roads going into it, and we apologize to our customers right now for any lapse in the service that they may have had. We took a system that was, we honed it down for 20 years. We headed down pat and basically changed every aspect of it, from the trucks we used to the way we actually collected the trash, to the routes, and everything there is to do with it. And so we've hit some, you know, we've had some routing problems. We've got drivers that are learning new trucks, and all that, I've always said sanitation is a business of seconds. If I get to that curb and I get that picked up in a few seconds, and I get my route done and everything is fine, but if it takes me longer at the curb at each of those stops, pretty soon I'm running late into the night. And we've had some issues. The customers are starting to get better at setting those out, and we appreciate them taking that time to do that. If they can set those at the curb and make sure there's at least four fit on either side of that cart, so when that arm goes out to grab it, it can grab it without getting a mailbox or extra bags or hitting the other cart and knocking it off where they have to go and deal with that, that helps a lot. Also, getting it out by 7:30, because we've changed every route there was. And so if you're used to putting it out at 1:00, and you set it out at 1:00, and maybe we came earlier that day, it looked to you like we didn't pick it up. It's just that we've had to adjust those routes. So if you can get it out there by 7:30, it'll help us tremendously, because we'll be able to get it taken care of. And let me just ask, be patient. I understand that it has been a challenge for everyone. Our staff's working many late nights, but they want to serve the customer, they want to get it done right, and it's just going to be honing that down so that we can do it really well. So anyway, I appreciate this time, and if there's any questions about what we're doing.
Just keep her recycling.
Oh, recycling's been amazing.
Great.
Yeah.
Can you give us some ideas on the recycling?
It was in the paper this morning. Go ahead, but you can tell them.
Yeah, it's, any plastics, and we have to say that any plastics, 1 through 7, except for styrofoam, where they can't take that, any metal cans, and any paper. They can take all that stuff. And if you saw the article on the Murph, I mean, we've gotten a lot out there, citizens are really recycling, we're very proud of that, so.
Yeah, we've grown from 28 tons?
Yeah, we're doing...
To how many?
We did 54 last week, and I think it was 72 the week before.
Yeah, in a week, where we were averaging about 28, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The Crane Brothers are going to be having to add on to that building out there for a long...
That's right.
Good.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Huh? Okay. 911, heard, listened to Richard, and I was over at the fireman's training facility, a little bit late, but when you walk through the door and you see these two items, I mean, if the bumps on your neck don't grow, there's something wrong. You know, I think everybody can remember exactly what we were doing that morning when this stuff started hitting the airwaves or hitting the TV, and, you know, I don't know about the rest of you, but I felt violated, I felt our country was violated, and it started this whole program that even till this day that we're in the middle of. There's people in this world, extremists, that want to kill the way, literally, that we enjoy our life, and will go to any extent in any boundary to make sure they destroy our way of life. And like I said this morning at another event, I don't really care what your politics are, you know, but the president is our chief, and decisions have been made to go after those radicals. I only hope that they stay after them and not let them off until they're gone, okay? Again, I don't care what the politics are, but the commander-in-chief's job is to protect us, and we need to all get behind what's going on in Washington, D.C. right this minute to support, you know, Congress, the White House, to go after these thugs, I call them rats, and to make sure we do away with them once and for all. We go in, we give them a lot of trouble for a while, then we back away. It's time to get rid of them. So please, support your military, the people that are executing the plans, and again,